And those of you that have cell phones, please put them on silence or during the law so you don't disturb the meeting. We have minutes of March twenty-fifth. Are there any additions or corrections to his minutes as mail out?
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor with motion indicate the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Discussion and approval of the claims.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor with motion indicate for saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Human resources, we have the memorandum of personnel transactions. I will send that around for signatures.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate for saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We also have the authorization, the chairman authorization for initiation of hiring.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor with motion indicate for saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The auditors report, we see city of Corricks council appointment.
You want to move on these separately or together?
I think probably separately. I'd go you back.
Move on Jake Richard.
Second.
There is a second discussion. Those in favor with motion indicate for saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Move on Clifford Teal.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate for saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay.
Move on the liquor license for the White Horse Patrol.
Second.
Discussion.
There's some good parties out there.
Those in favor with motion indicate for saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. All right, we have the note to exceed for borrowing general obligation business. I talked about that and guided through that, our loan agreement. This is a public hearing on it.
Yeah, the public hearing first.
Yeah.
Anybody to be heard?
If you want to be heard on the public hearing, on the loan agreement and Assurex notes.
Mr. Chairman, hearing, no one move the hearing, be closed.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate for saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, item, since I can see it should be approved of the resolution, including proceedings to unaddictive dispatch.
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? Anything to add to it then?
Cool.
Okay. Those in favor with motion indicate for saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
I'll write the notes for your work for the chair.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Item six is the prevention commissions, the youth at risk update. Mike Taggart.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Susan Parton, my name is Mike Taggart. We're both members of the youth commission. I'm admiring your tight agenda here. Not sure if it's an April Fools' joke, asking Irishmen to limit its speaking. I'll do my best.
Well, you have a nice time, so.
Just to update you on the where we're at with youth commission and what we're doing so far, first of all, we've had a new member appointed. As you know, Monique Scarlett has resigned. Well, hi Pearl. And this is Pearl Corn Floris, who's our new member. Glory, I never get it right, but she's our new member. And if I don't get this right, they're both going to just beat the snot out of me, so.
That's not all bad.
That's not all bad, no. One of the things that I would like to visit with you about is something that's, I don't want it to become political or anything else, kind of a personal comment, and that is, as many of you know, I've been a longtime administrator, retired in Sioux City. And back in nineteen ninety-two, when I was working in a wonderful area of Sioux City, we had neighborhoods in crisis. That's the best way I could say it. Because those neighborhoods were in crisis, our schools were in crisis, and we had, people forget, we had a gang activity going on in our city that was seriously affecting our schools. We had adults coming into our schools, recruiting kids. We had adults attacking kids, kids attacking kids. And with the cooperation of the police department, the county sheriff, the county board of supervisors, the Sioux City School District, the Sanford Center, and if I'm missing anyone, I'm sorry, but what came about was something known as the outreach program. And that outreach program had a dramatic effect on what happened to our kids in our schools. First of all, in one year, we regained control of those schools. And mainly that was because of some of the process by which that outreach program went about doing things. First of all, they recruited people who could speak, were bilingual, could go into community houses of people who were poor, at risk, grew up in different communities and different value systems, and build a trust level with kids. And it really turned our schools around, and it made it very possible for us to go back to doing what we do very well in schools, teach, and rescue kids. And it was a terrific program, still is a terrific program, in my opinion, and it's morphed into many things now. It is a, probably one of the models for gang prevention that I have ever seen. And one of the things that always bothers me a little bit is, if you lose a program, you won't get it back. That won't happen again. And if you lose a program, the damage that will be done to the community, in my estimation, in my opinion, I can't give you data, will be irretrievable. One of the stories, I was thinking, is I have a family that lives in Brooklyn, New York, and believe me, not to be critical of Brooklyn, New York, but we never want our communities and our neighbors to get in the situation that they are in, where we're totally capable of doing this. There have been communities the size of Sioux City saying, we don't have a problem. And now they do. They can't figure out how to resolve the problem. This is a unique program, and I'm not saying that just because of one of the board members here supervises that program. It's a unique, positive program, and I can give you countless names of families that this program has preserved. And I'll tell you the truth, it preserved my career as a school administrator. So, any of the other youth commissioners have any comments?
I would just like to say I retired off of Woodbury County Drug Court after fourteen years in January, and that I've seen the results of the kids go through that program. I've also had family, close family members that have been through that program, that have had problems in the school system, and I concur totally with what Mike has said. It's an awesome program, and it helps our community, saves us money in the long run by having this program.
For my only thing working with the community, I have countless families that trust in the Sanford Center for childcare, for training, for lunches, for after-school programs and things like that. So, there might be others that might be created, but the Sanford Center is well-respected and very well-established, and so I appreciate the hard work that George Boykin and his team have done for many, many years.
And we also thank you for ministering to the youth commission. Thank you.
One other point that I would like to make too, on our behalf, I think that the, there's been some editorials in the paper about instead of just getting a handout from the county or other entities in the community, you've just not been getting handouts from the other entities. As you correctly have stated, Dr. Taggart, it's been a relationship that we've had with DHS, with juvenile probation, with the Sioux City School District, with the Gang Task Force Committee that we served on back in nineteen eighty-nine, and we established the program in nineteen ninety-two. We had to go through an application process to obtain funds for the program. It was an RFP that was submitted to the entire county for this kind of program. We were one of two or three applicants that applied for the funds. We've applied for these funds at least three to four times, and we've been successful at the continuous. Those contracts have been a minimum of three years with an extension of another year based on the success of the program and the auditing of our program. So, it's, the center has not just been given a handout from the community to do this program. It's been on a competitive basis. We have proved ourselves, as far as I'm concerned, in making a difference, you know, in this community. When we started this program in nineteen ninety-two, there was over twenty-five different gangs that's in Sioux City. Now there's only seven or eight gangs that's based on the work that we do with the seven different schools that we're in, elementary through high school. So, we have worked for everything that we've done. So, just some additional information. Thank you.
Thank you for everything.
Susan, they want you back on Drug Court.
I know. I can't sing to you today, it's only holidays, guys, okay? And I'm sorry. Of course, it is April Fools', isn't it? I could sing you some. Give Dennis a raise. April Fools'.
George.
Yes.
You know, I've been on this board for a long time, and the success we've had with the gang outreach program is just unbelievable. And for the off-the-cuff criticism coming from the Sioux City Journal primarily, they should probably do their homework and know what they're talking about before they write some of these articles. And I'm just very happy to know you and be associated with your organization out there.
Item number seven, approval of a proclamation to recognize sexual assault awareness month. And we're going to have, Mark, would you come up, please? Council on Sexual Assault and Domestic Violence, this young lady here, introduce yourselves. I was going to read the proclamation, but Mark Munson would like to read it. I would give him that privilege of doing that. And on it, we have just my signature, so we're going to redo that proclamation so that all of the supervisors' names is on that proclamation. So, I think it's important enough that we do that. So, Mark, would you go ahead?
Introductions.
And would you introduce yourselves before we do that?
Okay. Thank you for taking the time to recognize Sexual Assault Awareness Month. This is one of our staff, Denise, and she's going to pass some information out so that throughout the month, you'll know what's going on. But also, I urge you to wear the denim patches throughout the month so that people in the community recognize your support as well of the work that we're doing.
Very good. Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April two thousand and fourteen, whereas sexual violence occurs in all communities, including Woodbury County, and affects people of all ages, race and gender, and socioeconomic backgrounds, whereas one out of three girls and one out of five boys are sexually abused before the age of eighteen, one out of seven women in Iowa have experienced sexual assault, ten percent of adult survivors are male. Whereas CSADV acknowledges the awareness and prevention are the key to ending the horrendous crime, it is critical to the welfare of our communities that citizens and systems support the work with their time, financial resources, and efforts to respond to the needs of survivors and eventually end the demoralizing crime. And whereas it is vital to the health and wellness of the citizens of our community that we take the time to talk about sexual assault, whereas the Council on Sexual Assault and Domestic Violence continues to provide leadership in the effort to educate everyone about the devastating effects of sexual violence and ways to prevent it, whereas CSADV encourages all community members to become further educated and join the effort to prevent, recognize, and react responsibly to sexual violence. We, the supervisors, sign below.
Is there a motion, well, that's a motion to receive this as a resolution instead of saying?
Second.
Any discussion, further information, please?
I just want to say that sexual assault continues to be the most under-reported crime in the United States, and it's only with the acknowledgement of adults and our youth as well that we're going to be able to reduce the statistics of sexual assault. Sexual assault is a crime that concerns both women and men, and is especially concerning to the youth of our community. And that's why we try to do so much prevention, both in all of our schools as well as our adult groups, so that our community becomes aware of the issues of sexual assault, as well as the impact that violence has on our community.
You do good.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions, Denise?
I don't have. How fast is this resolution going to be out for our folks to sign it?
Again, thank you for your acknowledgement.
Well.
Was there a motion in the session?
There was a motion, and there was a second. Those in favor of receiving this resolution as presented, would you say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Please do take a look at the newsletter as well, you'll see some of the other things that are going on at the agency, and we have a busy month for April. Denise has been very instrumental in getting those activities put together.
Can we keep this and have Jackie sign it, and we'll get it to you?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Please, sign it.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Okay, item eight is the approval of the greenery of Green Woodbury County and the club and water conservation. Is there anyone here for that?
Nobody. That would be Louis Byers, I believe.
Will the chairman reauthorize the sign?
Second.
Discussion. I don't think they've been changing the national agency. Something that we don't have to add in places, because it's been a job.
No, they haven't even changed who the chair is.
Those in favor with motion indicate for saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item number nine is the economic development. David, you had to do some pitching for this on there.
Yeah, good morning supervisors. Actually, I just wanted to bring something to your attention, and it's kind of something that I'm working on. In looking at some of the policies for the county and for the department, I've noticed that there is no specific policy regarding, in the event of there's not being an overnight stay, use of county or department funds for meals in conducting county or department business. And so, I've put together an example of a policy addendum, but after reviewing it and kind of giving it some more consideration, I'd like to do a little more research at some other city-county economic development departments and see how they operate that. And it basically would just be in the event of there being business conducted, you know, county or department business in the event of not being an overnight stay.
Okay.
So, it's just something that I wanted to bring your attention and just want to have a transparent opportunity to bring that to light.
Bring that back to us when you get that additional information, and we can determine what direction we go, because I'd like to see some examples of what other counties do with the department structure here, also cities, and you don't want to violate our tax laws either.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And I guess more than.
It's inappropriate, and so I would like to have some additional information.
Move to table.
Okay.
Second. Second.
If there is discussion, those in favor indicate for saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Mr. Derry.
Good morning.
Morning.
First item we have is the approval of plans for Michigan Avenue Bridge. This is just south of County Road D thirty-eight, east of Anthem. We replaced the bridge on the pavement two years ago. This one is for the bridge on the gravel road that lies immediately to its southeast, or southwest. We did grade and gravel that road to give residents a way out of the construction of this bridge. This just maintains this crossing in place out there.
Is there a motion?
Move it. Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor indicate for saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item B.
We have a request for an underground utility permit. This one is for Woodbury County REC on Calhoun Avenue.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor with motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item C.
I'll get that one to your first signature here after a little bit.
Okay.
Or after the meeting, I should say. Next one is consider a resolution to place a seasonal embargo on a couple of county roads. It is spring, and we have some areas where frost is causing us some problems. Two hundred and sixtieth Street from Highway thirty-one east to the intersection of, or this would be from Highway thirty-one east to the intersection with County Road L twenty-seven. This is the road that is proposed for grading and paving to serve the grain-buying station south of Anthem, but we've got some areas in there that cut up pretty heavily this year. We're starting to see the signs of that deeply driven frost starting to come out of our roads all over. But the roads with more truck traffic are the ones that are suffering more than the rest. But I recommend this and then Two Hundred and twentieth Street. This is that seal code section coming off of Lakeport Road and headed east, trying to preserve that seal code for those folks as long as we can.
Move it.
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor indicate for saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Warrior Road, we don't have to do that anymore because we don't own it, right?
That's correct. Warrior Road is now City of Sargent Bluff, and they have put a year-round embargo in place on that road.
Year-round?
Yes. Cities can do that. Counties can only embargo for ninety days. I did recommend embargo of the, of Two Hundred and twentieth for the full ninety days to protect that seal code as long as we can. The other one, I requested discretion to pull the embargo off when, as soon as we can put traffic on it. This may not be the last of the roads we're going to need to do this with. We've kind of got them under observation right now. Any other questions on that?
Nope.
Consideration of Highway thirty-one transfer.
I, I'll go ahead and bring up Tony Lazarovich, the Iowa DOT District Three engineer. Highway thirty-one, as you, I think you know, is going to be relocated from running through the center of Correctionville to running on the east side. I'm sorry, west side, thanks. It's going to be straight north and south road, beginning south of the intersection of our County Road L thirty-six, where we recently repaved and replaced the Rustixson Bridge. I think that was in two thousand and nine. A portion of that road was paved at that point in time and then paved coming into Correctionville. With that relocation, a portion of the current Highway thirty-one from the park where the claims and, and Cannon said.
Copeland.
Copeland. No, Copeland is the one longer river, isn't it?
Yeah.
No, it's on the corner.
Okay. From the park to where the new intersection of Highway thirty-one will be, will be transferred to the county, we will have the south half of the road. The city will have the north half of the road, along with the old portions of Highway thirty-one run through the center of town. As part of this transfer jurisdiction, DOT is accepting what's called Aspen Avenue, which is the city's name for the street coming south from L thirty-six. We're transferring that to them as part of this operation. DOT is providing some payment to the county in taking over that road, basically for hatching and resurfacing of our lane going through there. They're making separate cap settlement with the City of Correctionville for taking over thirty-one through town. It's my recommendation that we approve the TJ agreement. This will be the first step of what needs to be done. Once it is transferred to us, we'll want to bring this into our foreign-to-market system, so it'll be a part of County Road D twenty-two. That'll require that we file an application with the Foreign Market Review Board. Initially, it comes over as a local road. That foreign-to-market classification will be important to us in maintaining that road long-term.
Okay.
I don't know if you have any questions for Tony, but he came today to.
Do we need a motion first and then a second so we can go to the discussion?
Move it. Second.
All right, Tony.
Good morning. I guess one thing I would mention is we have advertised the transfer as far as Aspen, as well as thirty-one in the three newspapers, your official newspapers in the county, and we've gone past that period, and I don't believe there's been any motions or requests for a petition. As far as to explain a little bit how this process works, once we have the TJ agreement signed by the county, I would then sign it and send it into our central office, which they would take it to the Highway Commission for approval. So, it would not be totally approved until our commission makes approval of the agreement. The cash payment to the county of sixty-seven thousand plus, that would be made just prior to the transfer actually taking place, which the reconstruction of thirty-one is intended to be in two thousand and fifteen. So, at the end of two thousand and fifteen, I would work with Mark to come up with a specific date. We would then issue the check to the county prior to you taking over that stretch, and then at the date that we'd agree to, then that would take place. The county gets the cash payment, and there's no strings tied to what you have to use that for. It is based on bringing that existing stretch into a reasonable state of repair. And I'm not sure if there's any questions that you have.
That's an annual check, right?
Don't we all have one-time check?
And it was a fair settlement in line with what the cost to do the proposed scope of work on that structure relatively.
And I guess the other thing I would mention, I intend to have both the county TJ and the city go to the commission at the same time. I believe they've acted in Correctionville on the city's TJ. I have not received that back, but when I receive both back, we'll get it scheduled as soon as.
Sounds good, Tony.
Sounds very good.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate, thank you, Tony.
Thanks.
Those in favor with motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Each of these requires your signature once, George. It requires Pat's signature twice, once below you to attest, and then on the top of page, Pat.
Thank you.
Mark?
Do you have any other ideas? Mark?
I do.
Go ahead.
I got a call from Allison Avenue over the weekend, and late Friday with the thaw, two twenty-five to two thirty-five, and Allison really went down bad. I drove, I drove it on Saturday, and I hit a rut on Allison that just about threw me in a ditch. I think, Mark was out there yesterday morning before the sun was up, and all that was in good shape by midday, but I think we need to allow him to have people out there on the weekend, which is overtime. If they're going to be running that many trucks around the clock, sometimes six, seven days a week, we got to be out there, because it, the thaw really come out of all of it.
It's been hitting, and I've rode pretty hard here for the past week. We've been out doing pretty much daily maintenance on one part or another of the road. We've had some assistance from performance contracting. They've been providing us some of the TENSAR grid fabric in some of these unstable areas. This is, it's kind of like. Uh, this is, it's kind of like snow fence, although the shape of the holes is different that allows it to interlock better with aggregate. Um, what we've been doing is undercutting the areas where we're showing, finding instability. Uh, we're putting in a, a course of very coarse broken concrete is what we have in our stockpile. Uh, we haven't been going out to buy material we don't have. We pretty well shot our gravel budget. When we sign our contract for gravel and stone, we pretty well, uh, expend what money we have in those areas at that time. Um, but we put down a course of four to six inches of that coarse stone, uh, and then we lay gravel in back over the top. Uh, those have stabilized the, the larger areas very well as far as, um, making them solid enough to, to carry truck traffic again. Uh, we've had to do, uh, uh, short-term closures, uh, usually from four to six hours to allow us to do those where we've closed two-twenty-fifth one day and we had traffic going head-to-head on two-thirty-fifth. Um, Friday, we were doing work on two-thirty-fifth, which put traffic going head-to-head on Allison. Um, and it was in that period where that, um, crossroad area near Patons kind of came apart on us. Uh, we went out first thing Monday morning. Uh, we brought some of our, uh, smaller gravel gradation broken concrete to the area and filled in that short spread. It wasn't a long enough area to justify going in fixing with fabric. And, uh, I found that, uh, you know, using that broken concrete, it tends to draw some of the moisture out of that base and, and really helps, uh, firm things up. We also put that in around the stop sign, uh, on two-twenty-fifth in Allison. Uh, I'm planning to send our man out to, uh, blade those patched areas, yeah, this, this, uh, this afternoon. Um, we've also noticed in some of the areas along the edges of the road, um, you know, the frost, uh, comes out from the edges and from the top down. And, uh, you know, the edges being that much close to the surface warm up a little quicker than the core of the road. Uh, we had frost about twelve to fifteen inches down and then the road started coming up in chunks as we were trying to, uh, make repairs out there. Um, we're probably looking at a, I, I'm guessing with the temperatures this week, we won't see a lot of frost coming out of the road. Uh, we really need some prolonged weather in the sixties and then not getting down into freezing at night. We're probably going to be fighting this for a while. Um, I, I understand the residents are, are disconcerted. I had a, a call from one of them waiting on the answering machine Monday morning as well. Um, but we're going to, to continue to work through it. Um, Performance has provided us the grid at no charge. Um, at this point, they haven't, uh, offered aggregate yet. Um, I may just take the asking. Um, next week, in an effort to, uh, uh, assist with some safety measures out there, we're looking at putting in a number of pullouts. Uh, by those pullouts, we're, we're basically creating a widened section of road wherein a semi or ready-mixed truck can get over. Uh, they have-
What's a, what's a pullout?
Well, I would say it's a widened shoulder or an improved shoulder along that gravel road. Um, we're looking at doing four points between two-hundred-and-thirty-fifth Street and two-hundred-and-fortieth Street just north of the plant and, or the construction site entrance. Um, the, uh, or, uh, CF had proposed that we put those directly across from each other. Well, that only creates two widened spots in the road. Um, I'm planning to stagger them so that we get four widened spots where if we have a light wide load of, uh, construction equipment coming down or, uh, we just give people more spots to maneuver and, and work their way around traffic. Um, I'll be out tomorrow and, and flagging and measuring those spots for our crew. Uh, as you know, in our culvert, um, order that we did last week, uh, we had some special project culverts that were included with that. Uh, there's a number of eighteen-inch culverts. Delivery starts for those on Friday, so we'll start doing that work on Tuesday. Um, CF is providing all the dirt. Um, Performance Contracting will be hauling it out. You know, as they're taking in the aggregate, uh, they're going to bring us out a load of dirt for each of these. Uh, they're paying for the pipes. They'll be paying for the gravel. Uh, I'm looking at getting some of that grid from them as well so that we can firm up and stiffen up those areas, uh, prior to, uh, finishing off the top.
See, they're really cutting some of our costs by-
They're, they're helping us out with these costs, but we're doing it under, similar to the way we do a driveway permit where we bill the landowner. In this case, uh, these very long wide, uh, they're, they're almost, uh, they're two-hundred-and-forty feet of pipe for installation. And, uh, CF is paying the cost of the pipe.
I followed a cement truck toward the plant who met a side dumper coming out and they both were off the road to pass each other. And there are ruts along the, the edges, so, yeah.
Yeah, our, our edges, like we say, are kind of coming apart, but the center is still good and hard. Um, we're trying to, uh, I, I'm hesitant to go out and break that because we had, uh, one of my operators got a little exuberant in working on two-hundred-and-twenty-fifth. I mean, he went through, he cut the crust, he got it all crowned up. I mean, it looked beautiful for about eighteen hours. And that was the first area that came apart on us. You know, right now we've got, uh, in some places six, eight, ten inches of rock within that very hard crust that's bridging soft stuff underneath. And, uh, I mean, if we start to go in and break that up, um, we can, uh, we can create ourselves problems out there on the road. So folks are, are living with a, a road that's a little bit rougher. Uh, but we've been working on the site and having good luck with stiffening up those shoulders by bringing in some gravel with our shouldering machine, actually, laying it out and then just having the blade operator kind of tickle it to, um, get some additional aggregate out there to help support the loads, but also to, um, uh, not put a lot of weight on our trucks out there. And then we're still keeping that center of the road as solid as we can.
I would propose that we, um, allow him to do overtime on the weekends and have him, uh, affect it now and have him bring back a cost estimate, uh, as it's probably going to exceed what he has in his budget. Uh, and rather than wait to see what that is, I think we need to be out there. If there's something as bad as last weekend, uh, overtime is not that much.
I, I think he has, uh, the go-ahead from this board to make sure that everything is running, uh, the roads are taken care of and, um, whatever you gotta do, you gotta do.
Right. We may need to ask for a, a little more money for some of that, though.
Take it out your salary.
Pardon? Take it out of my salary, yeah. Yeah, that's been suggested, so.
But I, I, I think that you have consensus probably of the board going, I think you think it's necessary out there, but something like that, you're, you're standing right on top of it, Mark.
Yeah. Well, I'm, I'm personally checking the roads just about daily and, uh, uh, trying to make sure that we don't have a repeat of, you know, two-twenty-fifth. And, and again, our, our operator, I just, uh, this is his first real big spring cycle. And, uh, I don't think, yeah, he was, he was out there attempting to, uh, make the road as good as he could and, uh, it, I think it did end up hurting us a little bit last week, but, um, we'll be, uh, continuing to check them just about every morning and, uh... Try and keep them as good a shape as we can.
Sounds good.
And I think we have to, you know, uh, keep that operation going down there as smoothly as possible. And CF, uh, might need to, you know, they're very, very, uh, collaborative with us and, and, and working together on these various issues like that. And, uh, so we'll continue that kind of relationship if we need to in the future as far as, uh, this might be something that, uh, probably, uh, puts up additional expense, we can, uh, charge back to TIF.
We can't though because we're inside the two-mile limit of Sioux City.
We're inside the two-mile limit, so we can't.
That's, that's a problem with utilizing any TIF money on these, on these northern haul roads because, uh, the TIF district, uh, doesn't get far enough south. I think we're within, uh, we're actually within CF property with the southern component of the, of the city's authority, um, although it is north of where the, the physical site of the plant is.
Yeah.
Um, we're, um, you know, we're reliant on, on what we've already got in our stockpiles for, uh, making road repairs out there at this point in time.
It's not really advisable to drive out there. I mean, just hop in your car and run around that. It's busy.
It is, it is busy. And I think that's something that, that needs to be remembered. CF hasn't lost any time hauling because of road condition at this point.
And we haven't seen the amount of traffic we're going to see.
Well, no, once, once employees start coming in, then it gets a little more complex and I, we would really like to get out there and get those roads shaped up for this first, uh, for spring, get those roads smoother again. But again, we need to go out and cut into that hard pan until we're sure we've got, uh, that frost out of the road.
Yeah.
Because, uh, um, you know, right now we've been dealing with short runs. I think our longest stretch has been about three hundred feet of road that was in poor condition. Um, we can't afford to have six miles go to pot on us. And, uh, um, we'll continue to work the areas that, that get a little soft as we can. Uh, I'm looking at renting a, a roller again like we did last year for when we get into, uh, the time where we can, uh, get those roads, uh, shaped up well. And, uh, we're also trying to, uh, get back some of our copper crown that we lost, uh, early in the, uh, last fall as the trucks started hauling. That was one of the things where Aaron had that road looking, like I said, beautiful.
Uh-huh.
He added a five percent crown. It was perfect for eighteen hours.
Great.
And then, uh, then things kind of went pop, but, uh-
Hopefully, after the frost is out, we're not going to have problems, but we'll, we'll save it.
Right. Yeah, you know, I think the, uh, I think the pullouts are, are a, a good idea for, for where things go head-to-head. If there's an accident, it gives the, uh, law enforcement a place to go and work with it. If there's a truck breakdown, it gives them a place to get off the road without, uh, without blocking. And I think that's a, a good cooperative effort with CF. Um, like I say, we're going to do the ones on, on, uh, Allison first, which is where the head-to-head traffic is. And that's where the most critical need is, I feel. Um, we can't neglect our other thirteen-hundred-and-forty miles of road though, so-
Right.
We may have to pull out for a little while and then we'll do them as we have, uh, time staff and material available.
You're going to do a great job. Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
I remember loving hearing the meaning of individual or group which will make the presentation on the night and night on the agenda. Yes, sir. Tony?
Yeah, come on up.
Give your name, please.
My name's Trent Wright from here in Sioux City, Iowa. I think all of you have received emails from me. Um, all of you have answered except you, Mr. Clausen.
Yeah, I figured you just needed one answer, so, and the chairman did that, so.
Thank you. Um, it was a really good presentation by the, the two groups you had up here, CSAVB and, uh, the Council, the Commissioner, wherever they were. And I just have to lay it on, I'm a huge, huge advocate of nonprofits. I'm a former president of a 501(c)(19) that I started for disabled veterans. My wife went through the training for CSAVB and has been a volunteer there for a couple of years. We give away thousands of dollars worth of cash, prizes, hours. So this has nothing to do with the value of nonprofits. Has to do with tax dollars going to nonprofits. I don't believe any tax dollars should go to any nonprofit. That's the individual choice of the person who they want to support. I propose that you have a vote on supporting or not supporting the policy of funding nonprofits. Thank you.
Thanks, Trent.
Well, the answer to that, if we, uh, if we did that, Mr. Wright, uh, there'd be, uh, more programs that, uh, the, uh, county funds that are nonprofit that, uh, hasn't hit the median as far as, uh, dollars are concerned because we, we provide dollars to, uh, programs that are nonprofit that would affect the community as a whole very drastically if those dollars were pulled, uh, from, from the budget and they have been historically, uh, funded by, by, by counties and, and also cities to nonprofit organizations and were non-mandated programs. So, um, we could do a, a longer list of, of areas where we fund that would affect this community in a variety of different ways very drastically. I understand you, you don't know.
Yeah, I appreciate your position. I mean, that's a position I held for a long time. Uh, but when you see organizations lose federal funds, state funds, and they're going to disappear, uh, I think it's incumbent upon an elected official to make that determination. You know, do you want that organization to succeed? Do you want it to be in this area, in this town, uh, or in the county? Uh, and so it's a call that you have to make. And, uh, like I say, I was in a position similar to yours, but I've come around to a different way of thinking now and I think I'm, I think it's right. And I think the majority of the board, if not all of the board, uh, feels an obligation, uh, to fund some of these programs.
Are you, hold on?
I'm sorry.
I would disagree with that. I'm not in favor of these non-mandated programs. I've said it a couple of times throughout this year. Um, unfortunately, I might be you now because you said you didn't like them before, but, um, I'm not saying they're not a good things to have. I just don't think, right now, when we're having to raise taxes and everything to cover things, we need, we need to start really thinking about these programs as a whole. And we need to do something about that because we need, why can't any nonprofit come in here and ask for money?
They can.
Okay. Why, why not? Everybody else does.
Well, that's what I say, that they can.
So.
Uh, that's never been, uh-
Is, is there an application process, advertisement, uh, a set of criteria and rules for someone to look at to apply for essentially a government, county grant? You just put a press release out saying, "We've got $250,000 for giving away this year." Please fill out our website for the criteria.
You know, what happens is, yeah, for example, sir, when we, when we set aside $150,000 a few years back for, from ready-shooting revenue sharing money, uh, to fund, uh, programs such as, uh, for our fire departments and our, uh, ambulance services out in the little area. Now, that has been a revolving fund and that was tax revenue sharing money back in those days. And we've been able to purchase, uh, a number of different safety equipments for those areas out there. And, uh, that isn't advertised, it's advertised to, uh, the, uh, the small communities. We don't help Sioux City, of course, but, uh, in the small towns, we've been able to purchase a number of, uh, ambulances and fire equipment for, uh, those, uh, small towns and those, and those areas. And it's a revolving fund, uh, that we started, I think, basically back in nineteen, uh, eighty-five, eighty-six.
We have an organization called the SULAN Regional Transit System. Uh, it's, oh, seven, eight-hundred-thousand-dollar project in five counties. There are fifty-five buses. Uh, the federal grant that funds that requires a ten percent match. So the five counties have to come up with the money to match the federal money. Uh, if we took that money, which is thirty-two thousand a year, I think, if we took that away, that would be the end of CERTS. They provide about ten to twelve thousand rides per month to the elderly, disabled, and people that don't have transportation. They don't compete with the transit system. You have to call the day before or you can't ride it. So a lot of the disabled, elderly, uh, use that system to get to the doctor and to the grocery store. So it, it's, it's, if we take that away, that's it.
That's funny because on the way here, I saw one of those buses full of kids. They didn't look, although they were disabled.
They, I think they, you know-
The school district may have a contract with the, with CERTS also.
I, I don't believe they're hauling kids in CERTS buses. I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Now, they are hauling, uh, the mentally disabled.
Yes, they are.
And the, uh, mentally disturbed, uh, the elderly, the handicapped. Uh, the big example is somebody that lives in Hornick, doesn't have a car. That's it. They don't go to the doctor. And what that-
And what that does is force them to move out of the country. They move to town. It's incredible who rides that system. It's... And if you take it away, gone.
Okay. Thank you. Eighty items from the board. I think we'll recess for a few minutes. We have our interviews for HR department, Laura Font, starting.